Councilmember Banks, you please lead us in the pledge.
I plead in peace and to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fortunately, we have Pastor Jonathan Bradford from Bethany Baptist Church who will lead us in prayer this evening. Pastor, welcome to council.
Before I put my minutes out, we have a quick transition statement.
Thank you.
Amen. Shall we pray? Most gracious God, our heavenly Father, we come this evening to say thank you for another privilege of being able to come together. And God, we invite you to come and be with us in this meeting today. We pray for President Harden in his absence. We pray for his staff who is here today, and we just ask you to crown them with knowledge and wisdom and understanding to execute righteous judgment today, God. And so we say, we thank you. We thank you for this wonderful city called Columbus, Ohio. In your darling son's name, we pray. Let everyone say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem Dorns.
Can I get a motion?
Any person who takes action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem Dorns.
Are there any additions or corrections of the journal? Hearing no additions or corrections, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed in tonight's agenda, will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read in the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you. We will now move to resolutions and announcements. Councilmember Banksen?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Just one announcement and resolution, just one announcement today. We, I should say, a resolution that is on the consent agenda, we just wanted to recognize that today we are commemorating the Central Ohio Restored Citizens Collaborative for Reentry Week. So today, April 21st through to 25th, is reentry week in the city of Columbus, and really excited about all of the festivities that will be going on, put on by the Central Ohio Restored Citizens Collaborative. There are many activities taking place throughout the community, including performance arts at Columbus College of Art and Design, a resource fair at the Reed Center, and a documentary at the Lincoln, and many more. And so just wanted to recognize this week here in the city of Columbus, when we talk about our population of folks who are reentering from the criminal justice system or who have been touched by it, we want to recognize them because they are, in fact, members and vital members of our community and serve a very critical part of that. And so I would encourage folks, if they want more information, to look up the Central Ohio Restored Citizens Collaborative for all of the festivities that are happening this week. And that's all I have.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla?
Thank you. I have one announcement today. On the consent agenda, under the Department of Neighborhoods, I'm proud to sponsor ordinance 0352-2025 in support of this year's Latino Heritage Month events. You should get out your pens and your calendars because this is also a save the date. Latino Heritage Month is celebrated nationally from September 15th to October 15th. Here in Columbus, the Latino Heritage Month Committee works hard to promote visibility, cultural awareness, and unity with the goal of creating a lasting impact in our community. We kick off the month with a parade and fiesta in La Plaza here on September 13th at 11:00 a.m. Throughout downtown Columbus and City Hall, the parade features colorful floats, dancers, and community organizations from across the city celebrating the diversity within our Latino heritage. After the month, fiesta in La Plaza brings everyone, or after the parade, sorry, fiesta de la plaza brings everyone together with live music, food trucks, dance performances, and resource tables. The celebration continues throughout the month with events, including a spa business forum partnering with our Office of Diversity and Inclusion, and Know Your Rights workshop, and much more. We close out the month with a celebration of Latino art and culture called La Feria at Block Fort on Saturday, October 4th. This free, family-friendly event includes an art exhibition showcasing Latino artists, live performances of music and dance, hands-on activities for children and adults, and a moment to honor community members who are making a difference. It's a joyful, creative space that brings our community together and highlights the incredible contributions of Latino artists and celebrates community in Columbus. I encourage everyone to take part in this month-long celebration and join us in honoring our local Latino communities. You can follow us on Instagram at LatinoHeritageCbus. And if you're interested in volunteering, you can reach out to our Latino Heritage Month Steering Committee at LatinoHeritageCbus@gmail.com, or you can DM us on Instagram, or you can reach out to my aide, Jessica Casares, Maris Lamus, for more information. And that is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I'm excited for those events. Councilmember Beatty?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember de Akauer?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. I have two announcements. First, a reminder that this Saturday, April 26th, is Moving Day, an event for raising awareness for Parkinson's. It's a great opportunity to come together as a community and raise awareness for Parkinson's and to also, if you're so inclined, to help fundraise for the event. The event includes Parkinson's disease-friendly fitness demonstrations, information booths, and the Moving Day Walk. The Moving Day Walk is open to everyone. You do not have to be fundraising for that, and it's a great opportunity to be out there in the community and get to know Parkinson's in new and different ways. Parkinson's shows up in a variety of different ways. It's not all what most people just think of Michael J. Fox, and there are symptoms that are quite drastically different. And so I encourage you to come and see Parkinson's in its wide variety of manifestations. Secondly, I hope you'll join me to Woodward Park this Friday at 9:30 a.m. for Columbus Rec and Parks Earth Day and Arbor Day celebration. There'll be a short program before we kick off a morning of volunteering. There'll be planting of trees and pollinators while removing invasive species, mulching a playground, picking up litter. There is a lot of different things you can do in support of earth warmth. And that's all for me.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Green? Councilmember Remy? Councilmember Weish?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Two quick announcements and one resolution. First, I want to wish everyone a happy early Earth Day. Appreciate it, Councilmember de Akauer kind of mentioning it. Hopefully, everyone is going to take some time tomorrow to plant a tree, plant a community garden, just be outside. It's actually going to be some nice weather tomorrow. And want to encourage everyone to join us on Sunday for Green Columbus's Earth Day Festival at Toyota Audubon Metro Park from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on the 27th. And also want to encourage you, mark your calendars for Wednesday, April 30th, at 3:30 for the first Public Utilities and Sustainability hearing. We will be hosting that here in city council chambers at 3:30. The committee will hear testimony on draft code language regarding pollinator gardens and utility reselling. How those two things come into one committee just shows the vast nature of what we cover in public utilities and sustainability. If you are interested in providing testimony or have questions, please email my aide, Chelsea at C-L-G-O-L-T-E-R-M-A-N at columbus.gov by 5:00 p.m. Monday, April 28th. And that is all for me. Thank you. Oh, sorry, I forgot the resolution.
There you go.
That was the whole point. I want to invite Ryan Foshee, the co-chair of the Clintonville Green Team, and a few of their team members to come to the podium as I read this resolution. While they're making their way to the front, I want to introduce Resolution 0094X to recognize and celebrate April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in Columbus, Ohio. This dynamic team works each year to connect individuals with information and empower local residents to make our neighborhoods clean and green. They complete local green initiatives and support sustainability projects in partnership with other local groups, including Columbus Arbor Fest. This year's festival is a collaboration between the Clintonville Green Team, Green Columbus, the Columbus Recreation and Parks, and the amazing volunteers that make it all possible. Last year's Arbor Fest was the first, and they hosted 77 organizations and businesses and over 2,000 attendees and over a dozen guided naturalist tours. I think we also did some prairie cleanouts that same day, too, so it was very invincible. Thank you all for being here this evening and for all you're doing for the community. Ryan, would share a few words, well, first introduce your team and tell us a little bit about this year's festival.
Great. We have a little routine that we're going to do here. It should be nice. Hello, I'm Ryan Foshee, co-chair of the Clintonville Green Team, a committee of the Clintonville Area Commission. Joining me today are other volunteers who deserve to be heard. Here are a few of the most important things to know about trees in Columbus. Who, either working alone, with neighbors, or in conjunction with important organizations like Franklin Soil and Water Conservation District and Columbus Rec and Parks Department, local volunteers, civic groups, and nonprofits have been the key to protecting and restoring the vital resource of a high-quality tree population in our city. Among many others, I would like to point to Green Columbus, Friends of the Lower Olentangie Watershed or FLOW, Friends of Alum Creek and Tributaries or FACT, Mort Schmidt, a resident who leads incredible weekly Tree ID walks and writes the Tree of the Month article for the Simply Living newsletter, Tony Stahl, who publishes the monthly Nature Scoop newsletter, Julie Smiley, who has done Too Much to Recount, and Diane Kadenaga over in Linden, who runs Sunny Glen Garden and the CCC for the PPP. I've come to know many incredible volunteers and organizations, some of whom have worked for decades or longer, and often for free, or investing their own money and time, tireless campaigners and hard workers on this important subject of trees and our environment, plants, animals, and healthy life.
Hello, everybody. I am Annalisa Corin Gorsuch, co-chair with Ryan on the Clintonville Green Team. So I'm going to talk about the why. So, two, trees create life for the benefit of not only everyone in our community or those that visit our city, but also for the care of the creatures, plants, and various fauna with whom we share this planet. Many of the volunteers or groups that Ryan mentioned are legends, whose work has outlasted them because trees can live far longer than any human being. It is a classic wisdom, and not just a metaphor, that planting a tree is one of the best ways to invest in our future and create a world worth living in. Columbus's trees are enjoyed by millions daily. The air is cleaner, the temperatures are more moderated, the water more manageable and purified, the wind less blustery, and the shade so pleasing and beneficial. Where we have planted or protected trees, cared for the land, and educated others to understand, appreciate, and act. Trees help in so many very important ways, enhancing our public health, providing serenity and comfort, and creating resources and wonder via the miracle of life. The city's urban forestry master plan details these things, but also shares important information on our tree stock, location, and canopy coverage. After much study and careful consideration, the goal of a 40% citywide tree canopy and 40% canopy coverage of any given neighborhood wherever possible is only achievable with everyone's participation. Most of the land in our city is privately owned, and the 40% canopy goal is not achievable without not only the city's lead, but also planting of trees and their protection on private property.
Hello, I'm Lynette Overholser. I'm also with the Clintonville Green Team and Franklin County Pollinator Pathway. So I'm going to do number three, the what. So don't be daunted by the variety of differences of tree species. There's a lot to know about trees, but the best approach is to take your time and find quality learning opportunities and learn as you go. You never know when your knowledge will come in handy. It's fun and empowering to say, hey, I know that tree. First, focus on native trees. For example, oaks are what's called a keystone species, meaning their presence is crucial for the health and biodiversity of many ecosystems. Oaks, you know, the ones with acorns, provide food in the form of acorns and leaves and offer habitat through their branches, canopies, and fallen leaves. Oaks host more caterpillar species than any other plant genus in North America, making them particularly important for the food web, and oaks shape and nurture the overall environment within forests where they serve that keystone function. But all native tree species are important. Many trees or other native plants are the host species for specific animals essential to the survival of native species of birds, moths, butterflies, and other insects. Some trees do well by a streamside, others excel along the sides of our streets, and yet more populate our parks and private lands. Each provides a unique benefit and excels in certain conditions. Non-native or invasive trees and plants introduce problematic side effects such as invasive and potentially destructive animal life or resource competition without much benefit. For example, the Bradford or Calery pear is beautiful but particularly harmful to the environment that is now banned in Ohio, with bounty programs appearing in some localities to encourage their swift removal and replacement with native trees. Learning how to spot both native and invasive trees is a very helpful skill that can be shared with anyone. Then a world of interesting facts about life and nature await as you dig deeper.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Watkins Martinez. Again, another member of the Clintonville Green Team, and I'm going to talk about number four, which is the where and the when. There are a lot of opportunities to plant trees, learn more about them, and make a positive impact that's easy to see. First, volunteer opportunities occur almost daily with nonprofits, citizen groups, and more. A simple internet search or two will immediately yield into information on plant sales, groups to join, tree planting events, educational workshops, and even financial assistance. Groups such as the Clintonville Green Team, Wild Ones, the Franklin County Pollinator Pathway, or others mentioned before can be joined for a little camaraderie, focused impact, and group learning. It's also fun. You can plant a tree at schools, in parks, or on private land. The neat thing about all of this is that trees can be planted almost everywhere in Columbus. Use your imagination. Plant a tree in the right spot where it will thrive according to its type, and do some quick research on proper technique. No mulch volcanoes, which is that huge mound of mulch around the base. Make the ground nice and slope simply according to the surroundings. Flat or follow the slope of the ground as may be. Now I'll talk about when. Now's the time. It's generally the best to plant trees in early spring or in the fall. Avoid the summer because it's often very hot and dry, and of course, winter is the harshest month for a young tree or seedling. Check out Earth Day opportunities with Green Columbus, Columbus Park and Rec, and others. Let's get out there, let's plant some trees, remove those invasive plants, and invest in our future today. Finally, please join our team for our second annual Columbus Arbor Day Fest later this year. It's going to be held at the Wedstone Park in Clintonville on Saturday, August 23rd. We're going to have it be from noon to 5:00 o'clock this year. Our festival is focused on fun and inspiring learning opportunities with the best of our community partners, arts, local businesses, and at the heart of it all, it's all about the trees. The festival features a tree summit civic event, free ceiling trees for attendees, and more at this, and also free, welcome for everyone, event organized by volunteers. We were inspired by volunteers in the city of Westerville, and now Columbus has its very own Arbor Fest. We hope to see all of you in August at our, and at our other events that are in support of something everyone can agree on, the value of our incredible and long-living allies, the trees. Thank you.
So first, I just want to say thank you all, and don't go anywhere because I still have to adopt the resolution, but thank you all for being here and providing that education. My wife has been teasing me and calling me the Lorax, but the reality is, we all should be speaking for the trees because of how important they are to the future of our city. So thank you for all the work that you are doing, and with that, I will move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem Dorns.
Pass or adopt it.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Lorax. Do we have any other comments from our other elected officials here, city auditor, attorney, treasurer? Thank you. Are there any requests by members of council for removal of an ordinance or resolution for tonight's consent action portion of our agenda? Hearing none, and maybe have a motion to waive second reading on title of 30-day legislation?
Remove.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem Dorns.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
In Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 842, 855, and 957-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinances 933 and 936-2025. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 945-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinances 391, 670, 674, 974, and 977-2025. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee, ordinances 817 and 1095-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinances 850, 852, 853, 858, 867, and 875-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance 435-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 348, 616, 818, 820, 854, 857, 864, 866, 869, 910, 915, and 1053-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances 173, 379, 964, and 965-2025. Rules and Policy Committee, we have ordinance 1052-2025. Zoning Committee, we have rezonings 717-2025, variances 718-2025.
Thank you, clerk. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Yes. Resolution 80x, 81x, 82x, 83x, 86x, 89x, 95x, 96x, 88x-2025. In Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinances 579, 686, 773, 794, 837, 843, 849, 868, 884, 912, 913, 934, 938, 948, 951, 958-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinance 1030, 1031, 1032, 1033, 1034, and 1035-2025. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 835, 836, 848, 862, 914, and 978-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinances 352, 863, and 916-2025. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee, ordinances 571, 953, 954, 956-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinances 890, 1022-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance 796, 839, and 981-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinance 110, 306, 712, 758, 768, 791, 798, 971, and 1042-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances 762, 819, 832, 861, and 976-2025. Rules and Policy, we have appointments from the mayor, A65, A66, A83, A85, A86, A87, and A89-2025.
Thank you, clerk. May I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
Remove.
Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Bankston?
Yes.
Barrosa de Padilla?
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 0082X-2025, on which I am abstaining.
Beatty?
Yes.
De Akauer?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Vice?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Dorns?
Yes. Consent action portion of our agenda passed with a noted abstentions. We'll now proceed into the reading of 30-day postponed legislation and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Governance Committee, which is chaired by Councilmember Banksen. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. First, up in the Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 0788-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to establish various purchase orders for fuel and fueling services on behalf of the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of a various previously established universal term contract to authorize the expenditure of $4 million from the Fleet Management Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the purchase of retail fueling from a previously established universal term contract. The retail fueling is utilized by the city vehicles for routine fueling needs. City vehicles can fuel at citywide, at a wide range, excuse me, of retail fueling locations throughout the city. The fueling network provides for a fast and convenient means of fueling city vehicles, particularly for our public safety units. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem Dorns.
Pass.
Thank you. And last, we have ordinance 0811-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to establish various purchase orders for fuel on behalf of the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of previously established universal term contracts to authorize the expenditure of $4 million from the Fleet Management Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is a companion to the last ordinance. The purchase, it allows for the purchase of bulk unleaded ethanol, diesel, and biodiesel fuels from previously established universal term contracts. This bulk fueling is purchased and stored at city-owned fueling depots situated around the city and is utilized by city vehicles for routine fueling needs. City vehicles can fuel at a range of city-owned and operated fueling locations, which provides for a fast and convenient means of fueling city vehicles and works in conjunction with the retail fueling to provide a strong network for fueling locations for city vehicles, including our public safety units and all other units. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem Dorns.
Pass.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. That's all we have this evening.
Thank you, councilmember. The next, or next committee we had come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Dorns, we have one ordinance today in Public Service and Transportation. That's ordinance 08402025 to amend the 2024 capital improvement budget to authorize the city attorney to appropriate funds within the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, to authorize the city attorney's office real estate division to contract for professional services relative to the acquisition, a fee, simple title, and lesser interest in property needs for arterial, Broad Street, Outer Belt Street to Reynoldsburg, New Albany Road, to authorize the city attorney's office real estate division to negotiate with property owners to acquire the additional rights of way necessary to complete this project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,560,000 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and the Federal Transportation Grants Fund for the project and to repay any unused grant funds at the end of the grant period and to declare an emergency. The Broad Street, Outer Belt Street to Reynoldsburg, New Albany Road project includes roadway on State Route 16 or East Broad Street from Outer Belt Street to Reynoldsburg, New Albany Road to go from four to six lanes. Work will include signal modifications at four locations, addition, extension Work will include signal modifications at four locations, addition extension of turn lanes at various intersections, medium additions and/or revised drive configurations for access management, construction of shared use path on both the north side and, or I'm sorry, on the north side, and sidewalks on the south side, and lighting improvements. It's always great when we have shared use paths and more sidewalks. The ordinance authorizes the city attorney's office real estate division to hire professional services, including surveys, title work, appraisals, et cetera, and to negotiate with property owners to acquire the various property rights necessary to complete the project in the far east planning area. The Department of Public Service is currently finalizing construction plans and is prepared to authorize right-of-way acquisition pending passage of this funding legislation. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. The next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee chaired by Councilmember De Akauer. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. We have a lot of exciting legislation in our community this evening. A lot. So first, we have ordinance 390-2025 to authorize the transfer of $293,000 from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to the Recreation Parks Operating Fund for the sport of music licensing, community events and festivals, and Jazz and Rib Festival, SEBA Soul Fest, to authorize the appropriation of $293,000 in the Recreation Parks Operating Fund, to authorize the Director of Recreation Parks to enter into grant agreements for support of community special events totaling $183,000, to authorize expenditure of $183,000 in grant agreements for support of community special events, and to declare an emergency. Every year, the Recum Parks Department utilizes funding from the Hotel Motel Tax Revenue to fund multiple items related to public performances in the city. $35,000 will be used for annual licenses for public performances of music at city events. $75,000 will go towards the production of both the Jazz and Rib Fest and the SEBA Soul Fest, and the remaining $183,000 funds the Special Event Support Program. The Special Event Support Program administers grants to support community groups hosting events that celebrate cultural, ethnic, and artistic diversity for the enjoyment of the whole city. Events qualify for a grant if they are free, open to the public, and take place on public land. During both the spring and fall cycles, a committee made up of council, mayoral, and Parks Commission staff helps make determinations as to eligibility and funding levels for these grants. Corinne Taylor from Recum Parks staffs and oversees this program, and I would really love to thank her for all her hard work and dedication to once again running a smooth and efficient grant process. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance 672-2025 to authorize the Director of Recreation Parks to enter into contract with Marker Construction LLC for the Marion Franklin Pool Replacement Project, to authorize appropriation of $2,444,578.15 within the Recreation and Parks Permanent Improvement Fund, to authorize the transfer of $3 million within the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and Permanent Improvement Fund, to authorize amendment of the 2024 capital improvements budget, to authorize expenditure of $3 million from Recreation Park, the Voted Bond Fund, and Permanent Improvement Fund, and to declare an emergency. So I'm really excited to be introducing this piece of legislation authorizing work to finally begin on the replacement of the Marion Franklin Pool. I'm also a little jealous. The 50-year-old pool will be demolished at the conclusion of the 2025 swim season, with work scheduled to be completed in time for the 2026 swim season. Unlike renovations of the pools at Glenwood and Windsor, the current pool will be completely replaced with a new, multiple feature leisure pool. The project will also meet community requests received as part of the public outreach phase of the Recum Park Aquatics Capital Improvement Plan. Swimming pools have been shown to improve the quality of life in a community. The city of Columbus's aquatic facilities offer opportunities for people to learn how to swim, have access to physical activity, and to relieve the stress associated with hot summer weather. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Pass.
Thank you. Our next five ordinances involve the awarding of grants under the city's Summer Youth Grant Program. This year, we're awarding $8.6 million in grants to 112 community organizations hosting youth programs during summer break. Over 200 organizations submitted funding requests as part of an open competitive application process. These requests were then evaluated by an interdepartmental review committee that made funding recommendations to the administration and council. Grants are administered by four departments: Recreation Parks, Neighborhoods, Office of Violence Prevention, and Education. This funding is critical for supporting the work our community nonprofits and organizations do during the summer months. The 112 organizations being funded all host summer programs aimed at improving academic performance, health and well-being, and/or enhancing career readiness. In particular, programs that serve vulnerable, at-risk, and underserved youth disproportionately impacted by crime and violence are prioritized for funding. I'm proud to once again be shepherding this program across the finish line this year. There is a vast amount of summer youth programming available in our city, and I do not envy the hard funding decisions that had to be made. This council administration stands united in our commitment to ensuring kids are in safe and supportive environments outside of school, places where they can learn life skills necessary to avoid conflict and navigate jobs, and school, and just life in general; places where they can engage in healthy competition and learn teamwork; and places where they can explore new creative avenues or expand their academic curiosities. To put it bluntly, this funding ensures our communities can prevent our kids from being bored this summer, keeping them active, engaged, and on the right path. So before I move into the individual pieces of legislation, do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions on this funding?
Yes, um, excuse me. How many organizations applied?
Over 200. I think the exact amount was 219.
Thank you.
Councilmember. I just wanted to, I just wanted to give another note of appreciation. I think Recum Parks is always hot, you know, 360 days of the year. I mean, I grew up as a Columbus kid going to Recum Parks, going to Barnett Rec Center. There used to be a pool that unfortunately closed. It was a Live More Pool in my neighborhood, but that was where I went every single day in the summertime. I used to ride my bike there, and so I just want to say a thank you, a pre-thank you to our Recum Parks staff, especially the folks who work in each and every one of those centers, because those are the folks that our kids confide in. They're the ones who keep our kids safe. They keep our communities safe. They keep our communities thriving. I'm excited about the Marion Franklin Pool that's in District 8. I know the South Side has been clamoring for that pool, and so I know that they are very, very excited. I know that we will always have 200, 300, even more organizations that are worthy, that are doing amazing work, and it is very difficult to make those decisions, especially at a time right now where we are, you know, facing some budgetary issues. So I just wanted to just acknowledge that these pieces of legislation, I think as we read through all of them, there are a lot of numbers and a lot of words, but this always represents people, and I just wanted to elevate that. Councilmember, elevate your work and elevate the work at the department because it is so important. As the days get warmer and longer, this work is critical to our community in so, so many ways. So I just wanted to make sure that we didn't gloss over that because there is so much behind what this is and what this means to our folks. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments? All right. Well, first up, we have ordinance 952-2025 to authorize the Director of Recreation Parks to enter into advance pay grant agreements with 59 local registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations in support of summer youth programming, to authorize an expenditure in the Recreation Parks operating funding, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Pass.
Thank you. Now we have ordinance 1001-2025 to authorize the Director of the Office of Violence Prevention to enter into advance pay grant agreements with five local registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations in support of summer youth engagement and employment programs, to authorize a reduction of appropriation in the Recreation Parks Operating Fund, to authorize the transfer of $1,050,000 within the general fund, to authorize expenditure of $475,000 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Yes.
Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Pass. Councilmember, we had, I think, an error in the title for 0952-2025, so I'm going to make a motion to reconsider 0952-2025. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Reconsidered. Councilmember, if you could, again, read the title of 0952-2025 and then move for passage.
Okay. 0952-2025 to authorize the Director of Recreation Parks Department to enter into advance pay grant agreements with 59 local registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations in support of summer youth program, to authorize an expenditure in the Recreation Parks Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency.
Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Pass. Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay. So we're now up to 1016.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
So next, we have ordinance 1016-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Neighborhoods to enter into advance pay grant agreements with Buttanees Community of Central Ohio, Columbus Fashion Initiative, Doing Businesses, Columbus Fashion Alliance, Community Development for All People, Community for New Direction, Community of Caring Development Foundation, Community Refugee and Immigration Services Incorporated, Directions for Youth and Families, Education Foundation for Freedom, Ethiopian Te Wado, Social Services, Girls Leap, Green Leaf Job Training Services Incorporated, Highland Youth Garden, Impact Community Action Agency, Lead With Purpose, Legacy Youth Sports Academy, Lower Lights Ministries, National Trades, Skilled Trades Network, Nationwide Children's Hospital Foundation, New Birth Christian Ministries Incorporated, Somali Community Association of Ohio, Southside Hope Community Development Corporation Incorporated, St. Stevens Community Services Incorporated, the Center for Healthy Families, the Hardey Center, Columbus Metropolitan Library, Kingdom Knowledge Foundation, Made for Medicine, Ohio State University, Think, Make, Live Youth, Williams Leadership Academy, Doing Businesses, Girl Code, Girls, in support of summer youth employment and programs, to authorize expenditure from the general fund for programming, including the purchase of food and/or beverage items which serve the public for the purpose of administering summer youth employment and programming, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Pass.
That gave me a chance to catch my breath. Next, we have ordinance 1027-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Neighborhoods to enter into advance pay grant agreements with the Columbus Urban League and support of summer youth employment and programs, to authorize expenditure from the general fund for programming, including the purchase of food and/or non-alcoholic beverage items which serve the public for the purpose of administering summer youth employment and programming, to authorize reimbursement for reasonable food and non-alcoholic beverage expenses, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Pass.
Thank you. And lastly, we have ordinance 1028-2025 to authorize the Director of the Office of Education to enter into grant agreements with two nonprofit organizations in support of summer youth engagement and employment programs, to authorize a transfer of $75,740 within the general fund, to authorize expenditure of $235,740 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Pass.
Thank you. That is all from me this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. The next committee to come before council is the Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember Green, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Council President Pro Tem. Tonight, I have two ordinances on second reading. The first is ordinance 0745-2025 to authorize the Director of Development to execute grant agreements with numerous not-for-profit social service agencies in the amount of up to $4,570,000 for the Elevate 2.0 program, to authorize the provision of services for 12-month periods beginning January 1, 2025, to authorize the advancement of funds on a predetermined schedule during the term of the agreement, and to authorize the transfer between object classes and the expenditure in an amount of up to $3,492,000 within the Emergency Human Services Fund, and authorize the appropriation and expenditure of funds of funds, an amount of an amount up to $1,078,000 with the Income Tax Set Aside Fund. This legislation marks the third and final year of our Elevate 2.0 funding. $4.57 million will be allocated to 60 tax-exempt businesses that are providing critical lifesaving services to the residents of Columbus. While this allocation couldn't be more timely, as state and federal funds that support our city's critical human infrastructure are actively under attack, it's more than just that we are investing, it's also how. We know that traditional funding models for supporting the human services sector are both outdated and many times inequitable. Traditional models of funding have been targeted towards, you know, individual programs. Terms are often dictated by the funders who aren't the experts in the field, which doesn't make much sense. When the city has an idea to build a bridge, we hire architects and engineers and construction industry experts to execute that big and important work, and the same needs to be true for our human services sector. These systems are incredibly complex and take highly specialized, knowledgeable professionals to be able to execute these essential services, and it's incredibly challenging to do that effectively and hire and retain the talent that you need to do that big and important work when we're using outdated funding and appropriations models that, for example, only have one-year contract term limits or arbitrary restrictions that leave our contractors with significant deficits. And that's why I'm so excited that the Elevate program has been seeking to right-size. You know, rather than traditional grant funding models that are focusing on individual program needs, Elevate 2.0 is really investing in the core infrastructure that we need here to be able to support our people and also to support the organizations that are supporting our people, especially the people across our community that are experiencing hardship. And so I know that we're really excited to be able to put forward these new and innovative types of comprehensive solutions to drive transformative change for all of our residents. And so I guess at this point in time, I would love to turn it over to Director Stevens to see if you want to share anything more about some of the successes that we've seen in this, in this new model.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Green, President Pro Tem, Dorance, members of council. By being able to invest in capacity building for these critical organizations, we've gotten some great feedback, and I'd just like to share a couple testimonials. One, Gladden Community House said these dollars helped them provide over $422,000 meals of emergency food supplies. She has a name shared that since gaining the Elevate funding, they have seen more survivors staying in school and applying for renewal scholarship applications, and it's because of this investment we're making in the supportive presence from their staff members that Elevate grant funds. So we continue to get a lot of positive feedback from those organizations by being able to lift up their work so they can go out and support the members of our community that need it.
Thank you so much, Director. And I think, you know, I think traditionally, the way that, you know, at every level of government, we've looked at this type of allocation as more of charity, but what we're really doing is investing. We're investing in long-term sustainability of our community because our people here in Columbus are our greatest asset, and when we invest in them, you know, it's a reinvestment in all of us and happy, healthy, more hopeful, and safe communities. And so thank you for your partnership and the work that you do. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? Yes? Oh, seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauer Green, Remy, Vice President Pro Tem, Dorance.
Pass.
Thank you so much. And then our second ordinance tonight is ordinance 0749-2025 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks on behalf of the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging to enter into an agreement with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission to explore the strategies outlined in the CO AAA Strategic Plan for Success, to authorize the expenditure of $150,370 from the Recreation and Parks Grants Fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. CO AAA was founded in 1974 within the Department of Recreation and Parks with only 10 employees, and today, more than 400 CO AAA case managers, healthcare providers, and staff serve more than 14,000 older adults annually across several different counties: Delaware County, Fairfield, Fayette, Franklin, Licking, Madison, Pickaway, and Delaware County, Fairfield, Fayette, Franklin, Licking, Madison, Pickaway, and Union Counties. A strategic plan was developed in 2024 that recommended that, in order to accommodate this growth and the growing needs of our community, and best, and also chiefly, to best manage migration to the new My Care Next Generation service model, which is mandated by the Ohio Department of Medicaid, the agency should explore the possibility of transitioning to a regional government entity governance model that would align agency operations with its peer agencies on aging throughout Ohio and enable them to meet those new state and federal program requirements while also enhancing operational sustainability for the program. So this ordinance would permit CO AAA to enter into a partnership agreement with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission to explore those strategies that are outlined in CO AAA's Strategic Plan for Success as it pertains to the development of a standalone regional council of governments by 2026. Morpse's experience and expertise in developing these types of regional partnerships and executing these types of strategies make them uniquely qualified to assist the city of Columbus and CO AAA with this project. And then if adopted, Morpse would assist in the development of a plan to ensure that this new entity maintains the capacity to engage in high-quality service delivery without interruptions to client, staff, or the broader community. We do have one speaker signed up on this ordinance tonight, and at this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Hugh Williams from CWA 4502 to the podium. Hi there.
Council President Pro Tem Dorans, members of City Council. My name is Hugh Williams, President, CWA 4502. Our union represents approximately 330 social workers, LPNs at CO AAA who provide critical services to our community elderly population. Our members conduct tens of thousands of home visits for seniors in Central Ohio every year. They support discharged hospital patients with in-home care provided, education, information to residents and caregivers, and provide residents with referrals for affordable housing, transportation, caregiving support. In the last month, our union has heard from countless members of CO AAA who are very concerned about how the announced plan to separate CO AAA from the city will impact them, their families, and the clients they serve. Our members want economic security for themselves and their families. They want to know that they will have a job if CO AAA separates from the city. They want to know that their pay rate is secure if CO AAA separates from the city. They want to know that they will not experience a reduction in their insurance and other benefits set forth in their collective bargaining agreement. They want to know that they will continue to have union representation if the separation occurs. These benefits, as well as, these will benefit the clients as well as themselves, excuse me, these guaranteed benefits will benefit the clients they serve. The insecurity and instability at CO AAA is not good for the agency, the workforce, or the clients. These guarantees can and should be provided to the workforce through their union before the needed decision is made on separating CO AAA from the city. There is no reason to delay addressing these important issues that affect our community at large. CWA is ready to negotiate with the city over these basic guarantees, guarantees that are consistent with the fair and dignified treatment that every worker in our community has a right to expect. Thank you for the opportunity to address council this evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Williams. I appreciate you being here tonight. Do any of my colleagues have any other comments or questions?
Councilmember Green.
Councilmember, Council President Pro Tem.
Thank you. I want to thank President Williams for being here tonight, and certainly to all the members that provide those vital services to our seniors, not just here in Columbus but across Central Ohio. I think it's a little-known secret that, you know, this agency now services our residents here but provides those kind of vital, vital services for residents all across Central Ohio. You know, it's not every day that we talk about a portion of the city being spun off to a different organization or a different type of format. So I think the questions that we have sort of before us are interesting ones about starting this kind of process. And I've had the opportunity to meet with the CO AAA leadership over the past several weeks and certainly understand the reasoning for the exploration of this type of move to make sure that they're continuing to do this vital work in a way that fits organizational structures and certainly how they would like to approach this work to be efficient and certainly align with the different types of agencies that provide this work across Ohio. As President Williams just mentioned, we have over 300 bargaining unit members that currently work for CO AAA, certainly that are represented by CWA and certainly ASME as well. You know, tonight's legislation, from my understanding, is sort of beginning this process of exploring how this could work. Certainly, because of that, there are certain steps that have not been taken. So I wanted to ask a specific question of our Human Resources Director here at the city, Chris Moses, about if, if this process were to move forward, and we have bargaining employees, so two different unions that represent those individuals, if, in fact, this were to move forward, would the city be required to or entertain bargaining over those changes to the terms and conditions of employment moving forward?
President Pro Tem Dorans, members of council, if this does move forward, the city would be obligated to bargain with the union, with both unions, any changes that affect their terms and conditions of employment.
Thank you, Director. As I mentioned, and Chair Green talked about, this is the first of several steps in this process. Speaking for myself as a council member, I certainly support and understand this legislation that's before us here today, starting that process. But I do want to say, you know, my future support of legislation that would allow this move to move forward would be predicated based upon, I think, a lot of the things that President Williams talked about here tonight to make sure that those bargaining units members have certainty about their jobs, about their wages, about their working conditions, about their benefits. We understand, again, the reasons why this is moving forward, but certainly those individuals should have those types of assurances. And certainly, as we move forward, and those conversations can happen, both here in the city and/or a future entity that would be created, my support of that future legislation would certainly be predicated on those things being addressed as we move forward. So thank you, Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to ask that question and make that statement.
Thank you so much, Council President Pro Tem. Anyone else have any other comments? Councilmember De Akhauer.
So I, like my colleague here, Council Pro Tem, I support what CO AAA's goal is of this separate agency and understand the need for it. But I also feel for our employees who are concerned. And so I just want to reiterate, like my colleague here, my expectation that as we move forward in this with the future steps that we have, that we're going to assure our people that, you know, they're not going to lose their jobs. They're going to maintain the pay and the benefits that they currently have. It's very difficult to live in that land of limbo when you're in the stage where things are in transition. And they deserve some assurance. And like my colleague, I will be looking for that as we go through the process, that our workers who do so much for our seniors are not forgotten in the process and that they're not going to lose out through this. So I just want to express that. My expectation is that our city employees, when they move on, will be in the, you know, they'll have their jobs, they'll have their pay, they'll have their benefits, they're not going to lose out. So, thank you.
Well, yeah, I certainly agree with you, Council De Akhauer and Council President Pro Tem. You know, I think that, you know, we, these systems, again, to the point I made earlier, are incredibly, incredibly complex and often don't conform with the slow nature of the way government at any level, but our level also moves. And so figuring out how we can bridge those gaps while also making sure that our workers are protected. You, everyone here has heard me advocate over and over again about the need for increased resources into our sectors. And with that comes increased worker protections. You know, this is an agency that although it has been underneath the city for many years, it's a self-funded agency, doesn't receive any dollars from our general fund budget. And so looking at how to ensure sustainability and make sure that we continue to maintain our commitment to supporting the workers and the work itself, whether it is by supporting, you know, the exploration of this process or continuing to provide financial resources to ensure that the 14,000 people who are receiving life-saving services and the hundreds of employees that are employed here continue to be able to have a living wage job that where compensation is commensurate with the level of expertise and heart. It's not just hard work, it's hard work that the people in these positions do every single day and making sure that they are appropriately taken care of as well as they're taking care of so many of our other residents. So, oh, go ahead, Councilmember.
Chair Green, I just have two quick process questions. Well, maybe perhaps, I think they're quick. One is that there is a necessitated change that they separate from the city, correct, CO AAA? And then, secondly, what is that timeline? Is there a required timeline within this process?
So the goal would be for, if they are going to transition to a regional council of governments, would be for that transition to happen by 2026. So lots of time to kind of figure out the details as we move forward.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Well, again, thank you, everyone, for your commitment. Thank you so much, President Williams, and for the work that you do and the work that your employees do every single day and also to our partners at CO AAA. And so seeing no other comments or questions, I move forward for adoption.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer Green, Remy Weiss, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
Thank you so much, Council President Pro Tem. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next to come before council is the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Remy, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Pro Tem. Tonight, I have 770-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management on behalf of the Franklin County Municipal Court, clerk of court, to modify the existing contract with Dell Marketing LP for the support hosting of the monthly Azure usage to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code to authorize the expenditure of $3,000 from the municipal court clerk's computer fund and to declare an emergency. The municipal court clerk is in the process of migrating the existing phone system to Microsoft Teams Voice. This legislation allows the municipal court clerk to utilize the existing Azure licensing for monthly cloud storage of recorded phone data. To store recorded phone calls from Microsoft Teams Voice, cloud storage is required. This cloud storage is billed at a rate set by Microsoft. The legislation authorized blanket funds for these rates to be paid monthly. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer Green, Remy Weiss, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 801-2025 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate any and all budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the purchase agreement with Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless for wireless voice, data, GPS modem services, and equipment to authorize the expenditure of $1,591,750 from the Department of Public Safety's General Fund Budget and to declare an emergency. Funds for all public safety's wireless cellular expenses were budgeted within each Division of Police Safeties, or sorry, Division of Public Safety's General Fund Budget in order to leverage savings through the volume of use by all safety personnel. There is an immediate need for the funding of the wireless communication services and devices for the Divisions of Police, Fire, Support Services, and the Safety Director's Office as it supports critical operational activity for the entire Department of Public Safety. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer Green, Remy Weiss, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 893-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Police to modify the contract with Proto Inc. for the continuation of towing management services to authorize an expenditure of $2,200,000 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. The Division of Police is responsible for the safety and welfare of the traveling public on all public streets, states, state routes, interstates, and waterways, as well as those endangered by parking violations, accidents, and/or banned vehicles and watercrafts within the metropolitan Columbus area, as well as on city-owned land. In an effort to improve the transportation network and access innovative technologies, the city sought a smart solution to towing management services. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer Green, Remy Weiss, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
And finally, I have 939-2025 to authorize and direct the Director of Department of Public Safety to enter into contract with Alina Scherifu De Nova, doing business as Village Venture LLC for grant management services for the REACT program to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code to authorize an expenditure of $90,696 from the General Government Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Safety received a U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Administration grant award to be used to fund the REACT outreach efforts by the Division of Police and Fire regarding overdoses in the community. Said contract will be paid with funds to cover the cost of the program manager services, data scientist services, and a data quality assurance administrator services. Director, can you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Council Pro Tem Dorans, Council Chair Remy, council members, thank you. We're requesting a waiver of competitive bidding due to Village Ventures' expertise with these grants for REACT.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer Green, Remy Weiss, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
And that is all I have on Public Safety and Criminal Justice this evening.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come for council is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee chaired by Councilmember Weiss. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. First, in Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, we have 0354-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a planned renewal and modification with Ohio Mulch Supply Incorporated and Quasar Energy Group LLC, North Tree Farm, for the Deep Row Hybrid Poplar Tree Farm Number Two Program to authorize the expenditure of $3,357,000 from the Sanitary Sewage Operating Fund. The city has committed to 100% beneficial reuse of biosolids. This contract functions as a mechanism to facilitate Class B biosolid disposal via an Ohio Environmental Protection Agency-approved Deep Row Hybrid Poplar Tree Farm. The contract language allows for six one-year renewal options on a year-to-year basis upon mutual agreement and availability of funds. We will be in the third year of a seven-year contract. Let me pause there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Councilmember, you misread the ordinance number. If you could read that again and then go ahead and move for passage.
We will do that one more time.
You don't need to do the whole title, just the number.
Just the number. So the ordinance is 0354-2025. Sorry, and I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer Green, Remy Weiss, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have 0600-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a professional services contract with Burgess and Niple for the Asset Management Program Development Project to authorize a transfer of cash and appropriation between projects within the Sanitary Bond Fund and the Water Bond Fund to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget to authorize an expenditure of up to $808,471 split between the Sanitary Bond Fund and Water Bond Fund to authorize the expenditure of up to $250,000 from the Sanitary Operating Fund and the Water Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. The city of Columbus continues to experience growth, both in outlying areas as well as redevelopment in the core parts of the city. In addition to the need to add facilities for growth, DPU faces unprecedented budget pressures due to increasing regulations and aging infrastructure. The Asset Management Program will implement policies and procedures that will allow DPU to make optimized operational and funding decisions. The initial project scope will include the development of an infrastructure asset management plan for all divisions of the Department of Public Utilities based on industry best practices. Plan elements will address DPU levels of service, risk management, and lifecycle costs to support capital improvement plan prioritization. The initial plan will also offer recommendations on resource needs, including dedicated staffing, as well as funding needed, funding needs for plan development and implementation. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty De Akhauer Green, Remy Weiss, President Pro Tem Dorans.
Passed.
Next, I have 0809-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Viking Painting LLC for the Lizelle South Tank Painting Improvements Project to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget to authorize a transfer of cash and appropriation between projects. projects within the water bond fund to authorize an expenditure of up to $2,746,995 from the water bond fund for the project and to declare an emergency. In addition to providing quality drinking water, the Division of Water is responsible for providing adequate volume for fire protection. There are currently 38 water tanks in distribution in the distribution system, and 26 of them are maintained by the City of Columbus Division of Water. To keep these tanks in optimal condition, each year tank interiors or exterior are identified to be recoded. This project provides painting improvements for the maintenance of a steel elevated water storage tank. These improvements will keep this tank in optimal condition and prolong its service life. Regular maintenance inspections have determined that the Lizelle South Tank exterior needs to be blasted and recoded at this time. The interior dry area and spots of the interior wet area coating systems also need to be blasted and recoded. The project will include various safety improvements such as a fall protection tie-off lugs on the roof and a rooftop handrail opening safety gate. Special consideration special consideration towards environmentally friendly operations will be implemented, one of which is the recycling of the garnet abrasive blast media, which results in significantly reducing the volume of waste sent to the landfill. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawa Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed.
Thank you. And last, I have ordinance 0865-2025 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract with Jack Duheeny Companies Incorporated and so Southeastern Equipment Company Incorporated for the purchase of a combination vacuum truck and articulating loader for the Department of Public Utilities to amend the 2024 capital improvement budget to authorize a transfer of cash and appropriation within the sanitary bond fund to authorize an expenditure of up to $1,18,897.62 from the sanitary bond fund to pay for the equipment and to authorize the Department of Public Utilities to expend more than $100,000 against specific universal term contracts in a fiscal year and to declare an emergency. The combination truck will be used by operators at the sewer maintenance operations center and will be able to clear clogged sewer lines, vacuum debris from drains, and perform general preventive maintenance in sewer lines. The articulating wheel loader will be used by operators at the compost facility for processing raw materials and biosolid materials into a reusable ComTill compost product. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawa Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have for my committee this evening.
Seeing no further business, come over council. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawa Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed. We are adjourned. We do have one public speaker.
Come to order, clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections of the Journal? Here I know additions or corrections of the Journal is approved. We'll now go to the zoning committee. I chair the committee and all members serve on it. First, a little bit of housekeeping before we begin. Will the clerk please read the numbers of legislation in the zoning committee this evening that require waiver of second reading?
Ordinance 706-988-991-707 and 989-2025.
Thank you, clerk. I now move to waive second read on those items. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Waived. As always, I'll briefly explain our current rules pertaining speak for council on rezoning variances. We will hear a staff presentation for ordinance have a disapproval from recommend anybody, or if we have a public speaker signed up to speak against an ordinance. We permit three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask that those speakers limit their remarks to three minutes for the standard rules of city council. All speakers in council variance, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before the gave of testimony. Representatives of area commission are always able to speak in ordinance, so do not need to fill out a speaker slip, but we do ask you alert city staff of your intention to speak at this committee hearing. We do not have any public speaker slips filled out for tonight's committee meeting. On the advice of city attorney's office, we'll now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear affirming the testimony you have to give? Shall be the truth, nothing but the truth. You shall answer and pay to penalty of perjury. If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please allow the record reflect to Phil Shear. I am Brandon Carpenter from the Department of Millions and Zoning Services, Dan Bleschman from the Department of Public Service, and Christopher Law from the Division of Planning have been sworn in. First, we have ordinance number 0706-2025 to rezone 4240 Hamilton Square Boulevard being 9.98 plus acres located in northwest corner of Hamilton Square Boulevard and Lakeview Crossing from LM Limited Manufacturing District to LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. Site consists of one undeveloped parcel and the request of rezoning will allow a 48-unit apartment complex. Concurrent council variance to the reduced perimeter yard aimed to increase height of the detached garages will be considered later on tonight's agenda. Proposals approvals from Development Commission and the Greater Southeast Area Commission, but a disapproval from city staff. Due to that disapproval, we will not hear a staff report from Mr. Phil Shear from the Department of Millions and Zoning Services, and then we'll hear from Christopher Law from the Division of Planning. Mr. Shear, floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Dorans, members of council. As stated, the 1.98 acre site consists of one undeveloped parcel in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant requests the LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District to allow for development of 48 apartment units. North and west of the site are warehouse and office uses in the LM Limited Manufacturing District. South and east of the site are multi-unit residential developments in the AR12 Apartment Residential District. Site is within the planning boundaries of the southeast land use plan, which recommends employment center land uses at this location. Site is also subject to complete adoption of citywide, Columbus citywide planning policies, design guidelines. The proposed LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District is inconsistent with the southeast land use plan's recommendation of employment center, as this proposal does not include any employment-focused components. Therefore, city department's recommendation is for disapproval.
Thank you. Next speaker we, I'm sorry, is there any questions from council members? Seeing none, I would ask that Mr. Christopher Law from the Division of Planning give his presentation.
Thank you, Chair Dorans and members of council. As noted, I'll just reiterate that the southeast land use plan's recommendation for this location is employment center. That was based on the existing zoning at the time and the surrounding land uses of light industrial. This community has also, has complete adoption of Columbus citywide planning policies, or C2P2. Due to the plan recommendation and in consultation with the Department of Economic, the Division of Economic Development, planning is not supportive of the request of rezoning. Staff does note, however, that in terms of design, the proposal is otherwise consistent with Columbus citywide planning policies, design guidelines. Thank you, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Any questions from council members? Mr. Law, I just want to ask, how long has this parcel been vacant?
It appears to have never been developed.
Okay. And from a size standpoint, I understand we've had a few of these over the years where obviously the city has an interest in maintaining property for economic development purposes. At the end of the day, we're a city that's primarily funded by income tax, so making sure that there are sites in order to locate businesses within the city or develop, that's obviously of great interest. You know, this size parcel in particular, from my vantage point anyways, is not one, while, you know, may make sense within the area that it's in, given what's developed around it, you know, it is unlikely to produce a development that would have a significant amount of income tax generation. Is that fair to say? Or, I know you've got, our friends in the Division of Economic Development are not here at the moment, but from, you know, my view of this, I'm just curious if that strikes you as accurate.
Sure. It's not a very large site, so it, by its very nature, couldn't support very much employment.
Thank you. I want to invite the applicant representative, Mr. Jeff Brown, to the podium.
Good evening. Chair Dorans, members of city council. I'm Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney for the applicant. The property owner has owned this property since 1998, and they're a developer. And they've sold a lot of the property in this quadrant of 33 and Hamilton Road, so they know what they're doing, including selling the existing apartment complex property to my client. There are two other apartment complexes that kind of ring around this property. We're at 100% occupancy, so when this piece was still undeveloped, and the owner didn't want to do it himself in terms of putting something for his organization on it, he offered it to my client. So we're talking about adding 48 units to an existing apartment complex that's 100% rent. We will mute the CRA, which would allow us to do the affordable housing component for these units. We presented this to the area commission, they approved it, and so did the development commission. So I think it's an appropriate use in this area, and it's really just additive to a very successful existing apartment complex.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any question from council members, the applicant representative? Seeing none, thank you. It is obviously rare for us to bring forward a piece of legislation that does have a disapproval from city staff, and there's certainly a tension between reserving parcel for economic activity, or at the same time increasing housing supply, which we know is in vital, vital need across Columbus. Want to thank the city staff and certainly the others that reviewed this project. I, as Chair of this committee, did not take those recommendations lightly, and this is certainly a case that could go either way as far as where things could shake out, but considering, this also has approvals from the Greater Southeast Area Commission and Development Commission, and the ability to add these housing units, again, at a place that has employment centers nearby. And considering how long this site has been vacant, I do think it's appropriate to move this legislation forward, so therefore I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed. Next, we have ordinance 0988-2025, 2700 Lockbourne Road, being 1.46 plus acres located on the northeast side of Lockbourne Road and Faber Road from R2 Residential District to AR1 Apartment Residential District. Site consists of one undeveloped parcel and the request of rezoning will allow for a 35-unit apartment complex. The concurrent council variance will, we will consider later on tonight's agenda for this project as well. Proposals approvals from city staff, Development Commission, and the Far South Area Commission. Do I call you some questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to amend as submitted to clerk. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Amended, and next I move for passage as amended. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed as amended. Next, we have ordinance 0991-2025 to rezone 550 Thomas Lane, being 7.22 plus acres located in the northwest corner of Volantang River Road and Thomas Lane, from I Institutional District to LI Limited Institutional District, CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Site consists of one parcel developed with a river, a part of the Riverside Methodist Hospital campus, and the request of rezoning will allow expanded commercial uses, including a parking lot in association with the Riverside Methodist Hospital campus. Proposals approvals from city staff and the Development Commission. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed. We now move into the council variances portion of our agenda. We have ordinance 0707-2025 to granted variance provisions of section 3333.255, perimeter yard in 3333.35G, private garage. The Columbus City Code is property located at 4240 Hamilton Square Boulevard to allow reduced development standards for the apartment complex in the LAR1 Limited Apartment Residential District. This is a concurrent variance to the rezoning we heard earlier. This request accounts variance will allow reduced perimeter yard, increase the height of detached garages for a 48-unit apartment complex. Proposals approvals from city staff and the Greater Southeast Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted. And finally, move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed. Next, we have ordinance 0968-2025 to granted variance provisions of section 3332.037, R2 Residential District, 3312.21D landscaping, 3312.49 required parking, 3321.05B12 vision clearance, 3325.705 supplemental parking requirement, 3325.805 maximum floor area ratio, and 3325.809 landscaped area and treatment of Columbus City Code for property located at 44 East Duncan Street to allow a shared living facility for 16 occupants with reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District, and a repeal ordinance number 0358 passed, dash 2024, passed February 12th of 2024. This site consists of one parcel developed with a two-unit dwelling and is currently subject to ordinance number 0358-2024, which allows the existing dwelling to be converted into a shared living facility for up to 16 individuals with developmental disabilities. The council variance will update the reduced development standards as necessary for this conversion. The council variance is required because the current zoning district does not allow shared living facilities. The requested, the request includes variances landscaping, required parking, and vision clearance, supplemental parking requirements, maximum floor area ratio, and landscaping and treatments. Proposals approvals from city staff and the University Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted. Next, I move to amend emergency. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Amended, and finally move for passage as amended. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed, as amended. Next, we have ordinance 0989-2025 to granted variance provisions of section 3333.18 building lines, 3333.255 perimeter yard of Columbus City Code for property located at 2700 Lockbourne Road to allow reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the AR1 Apartment Residential District. This is a, another concurrent variance to rezoning we heard earlier that would allow for a 35-unit apartment complex. We will have reduced setbacks and reduced setback lines and property yards. Proposals approvals from city staff and the Far South Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Accepted. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Adopted. And finally, move for passage. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
Passed. Thank you, everyone. That is all we have in tonight's zoning agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston Borosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhauer Green, Remy White, President Pro Tim Dorans.
We are adjourned. Have a great evening.